We have a full committee here. Would you like to get started?
Absolutely. Thrilled to do something that we haven't done in a long time, which is congratulate and celebrate a group of students in person for, once again, earning national honors, national recognition for their work in Skills USA. There are seven students who will be celebrating this evening, but before I move around to the front over to where the medals are, my mojo has been interrupted.
Apologize.
I was on the groove.
As we're here, a meeting of the whole, we want to start with a roll call.
Member Castellanos? Member Capola?
Present.
Member Ford?
Present.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Nicholson?
Present.
Member Sadowite?
Present.
Mayor McGee?
Present. Again, Dr. Tutwiler. Sorry to break. I won't break it again.
All right, that's all right. What I wanted to do just really quickly is just acknowledge that while this evening is about celebrating the students who performed so wonderfully at last spring's Skills USA competition, they don't do it alone. They do it with the support of two incredible advisors, Jason McCush and Claire Price. I've not had the opportunity to watch what you all do with the students, but whatever it is, it works. And beyond just the competitions, the work that they support students doing in the community is really, really impactful. So I know I speak for everybody up here and the entire city of Lynn. We really, really appreciate what you do for students and the community. Mr. Mayor, do you want to join me over there? Mr. Hussey's ready. It's like we never. We know what we're doing. So my understanding is that there's three categories that students earn recognition in in the Spring 2021 National Skills USA Conference. And the first, I'll ask Ashby Murphy and Brian Lopez, if he's here, to come on over. No Brian?
Oh, Brian?
Congratulations. So we've got a couple of things for you. The first is a medal that would be presented. I asked the mayor to present to you in that case, and that is a silver medal for being recognized as a model of excellence for Skills USA. Congratulations. I have this for you as well.
Can we have a personal, please?
It's rusty.
Been awhile.
There we go. Congratulations. Brian did not be with us this evening. He earned the same distinction, so we can just give him a round of applause. Moving on to the silver medal and American spirit competition, there are three students who were recognized this evening. The first is Amber Rodriguez. Citation as well, and a nice photograph. Whatever you want.
Hello.
Congratulations. And then finally, Nisa Lewis. Nisa, we saw you on television last year, did we not? Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm gendered. Forget about it. Next for the same distinction is Alexandra Rodriguez. Congratulations.
Group photo.
Let's do it.
Both Claire and Mr. Bush.
Yeah, can we get? Get up there.
Would you mind coming back and get a photo with your advisors as well?
The mask, you know.
That's my cousin.
And then finally, moving on to two students who were awarded the gold medal in community action. The first is Ben Tartarini. Congratulations. Mr. McCush?
No family shots?
Also earning the gold medal is Cameron McCush.
Nephew.
Congratulations.
Stephanie is his mother. I had her in class.
Is that Jason's son?
I think a relative. Nephew, nephew.
Nephew.
Can I just ask, when is the spring competition for 2022?
End of April, early May.
So we'll see you in June again.
Congratulations.
Evening.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great work. You all ready then?
Yeah.
Jump right in. Okay. Now, we're a little bit past the time of 7:00, so we're, again, welcome everyone to the 14th regular meeting of the school committee, September 30th, 2021. I'd ask everyone to stand and join us in salute. Yes?
We need to adjourn. A motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Thank you. Now that we're into the next part of the agenda tonight, the, again, the 14th regular meeting of the school committee, I'd ask that everyone join us in standing and saluting the flag of the United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also ask to remain standing and ask for a moment of silence in memory of Nancy Lee Merriman, retired cafeteria worker who passed away on September 3rd of 2021, and Elizabeth DiCipio, retired teacher who passed away on September 10th of 2021. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. First, first on the agenda, yes? Member Castellanos?
Just respectfully, I know there was some folks, I know tonight we're going to come out here publicly to speak. I know we're gonna, we usually hold open mic prior to our meetings, but just if we could communicate some information in terms of what that looks like, procedural matter, because we have longer meetings. There are some families here who have been planning on coming here to speak on an issue, but we're not going to be, if I believe, could we just explain the procedural matter?
If you'd like to do that, or I'm happy to do it, was not on the agenda tonight for open mic, and I know we have not been doing it since we've been meeting in person and prior to that, because we've been meeting over the last, going on a year and a half or more remotely and then in person, we have not been holding the open mic part of the agenda. So it was not on the agenda tonight. We are discussing, moving forward with that. I know that we've been discussing, starting to look at that again, to keep the, the numbers down in the meeting room. We have been dealing with that, so it's not on the agenda tonight, so we'll not be doing that tonight, but we are, have been discussing potentially at the next meeting or moving forward this fall to get into open meeting, open mic session. So I think some members may be here for that, is what you're saying, Member Castellanos. So I just want to be clear on that. That's, we have not done it probably for 18 months since we've been in the pandemic. It's not on the, not on the agenda. And again, based on the pandemic, the remote learn, the remote meetings and so forth. So that's, if there are some members of the public here tonight for that, it was not on the agenda. Any other members want to speak to, to that? Member Capola?
The committee, I'm assuming the committee, if there was a vote of four or more, that we could make a motion to allow them to speak at the meeting?
Entertain that motion to?
The motion, motion on the floor from Member Capola?
Second.
To entertain, although it is not in the agenda, and I would, you know, I would look for a roll call on that to open it up under the circumstances. And then we will, again, I think, as we put notice in our next meeting, we will, if we have made a decision on that, and I think it's important to note that so that the public is aware of it. So I don't want to be excluding anyone that would want to be coming, but I think under the circumstances, the motion's on the floor. Member Sadowite?
Can we amend the motion then, Donna, to also have further meetings, also have open mic, including tonight, for the ones that are here?
Yeah, maybe a different motion, but I, I'm wondering if that isn't already a policy in our, is it a policy? Ask Chair Nicholson. Do you know if that was a policy?
Yeah, I believe there is a policy.
A policy already on it, so.
Just to reiterate, I guess, wouldn't hurt. No, I don't think it's a bad discussion to have, and I think more importantly, if we are going to go in that direction, which I am definitely open to, I want to make sure that we don't have a lot of people showing up at the meeting. So I think the one caveat I would suggest is that we, ahead of time, the people would notify the committee that they're coming, and we ensure that there's not, you know, more people than, continue, you know, there's continuing to be an issue. The cases continue to be a problem here in the city of Lynn and around the Commonwealth with the Delta variant. So I want to be cognizant of that and the same respect, the ability to have the open meeting, I mean, excuse me, the open mic portion of the meeting. So I would think that should be, I just want to add that as part of the discussion. Member Sadowite?
I know that when we were in the council's chambers, I believe we had a call-in capability when we had the budget meeting. So we could definitely look to see if that could be done here, if you want to keep the numbers down. So if anyone wants to do the open mic, they have the ability to call in prior to the meeting. We can look into that.
Can we, can we add, can we add that as part of the motion as well? So I think, I, Member Capola, if you, there's a suggestion on the floor to?
Accept a friendly amendment to add to it.
So if we're just?
Second.
Second. And then, so let's just, so we're clear on what the motion is. I will, I'll restate the motion. First motion is to allow those that are here tonight to be part of the open mic, and that the, moving forward, that we will renew the open mic portion of the committee, subject to numbers being reflective of the challenges we face, continue to face with COVID, and also explore an opportunity to have, potentially have a call-in for the open mic session, which typically is a 15-minute session with three minutes max on the, on the people to call in. So that's the motion on the floor. Is that a good, is a good statement of the motion? So, okay, so that motion's on the floor. There is a second roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson, do you just have an extra paper and pen to put there so if people do come up, they went, sign, sign in on the paper?
I'll bring it over if you want me to.
I have blank paper if anyone needs it.
I think she's fine. And Mayor, do you want to explain the process? Yep. So, so what we've done, and I, there's, I think there's several members of the public that are here that wanted to take part in the open mic. Just, I don't have the specific instructions, but it's a three-minute, three minutes, allowed three minutes to speak to the committee and? State your name. State your name, why you're here, subject matter, and have a chance to, to speak to the committee. Again, it's an open mic. The committee gets a chance to hear what your concerns or thoughts or issues might be related to anything related to the schools and take, so that, that opportunity is now available to the, a number of people that are here. And if you are willing to sign up and want to take part in the open mic, please feel free to step forward now. Please come forward. And sign in. Sign in and then? Name and address. So if you'd state your name and? You can sit if you like. Please, please, you can have a seat. Have a seat. Nothing to be nervous about, just?
If you have a seat, thank you.
Have a seat. Make sure you're speaking to the mics so everyone's? Speaking to the mics, so we can hear you. And as I said earlier, three minute, three minute limit, but welcome.
Thank you so much. My name is Sapathsyang. I am one of the mother at the Lynn School, so I'm honored to be here. Thank you. So we are here today. I have a few mothers here as well, as concerned parents, guardians and citizens of Lynn for our youth in Lynn Public School System. It began on September 17th this year, when one mother, which is me, found a very spoiled sandwich that my child was offered for lunch that day. It quickly became a starting point to which many came forward with similar issues and experience over the years, but especially in the six months to one year. We have record of numerous complaints where food was issued that was moldy, rotten, and therefore inedible. Part of that was during the pandemic, when parents of elementary school children were offered free lunch bags or boxes of food. Parents and guardian witnessed firsthand that there was a serious problem with safety of this food. Much of this food went into trash, unfortunately, which is very, very real food waste issue. It's very difficult to trust the food. Often, once you have your senior child eating moldy cheese or drink chunky milk, which I have experienced, I poured them out, they're all chunky. Many families have spoken with, with said that their child refused to eat school lunches, and therefore they make lunches from home. And many other family cannot send home lunches and rely on these lunches as substance for their child body and fuel for their child brain. We also need to be, be able to trust the Lynn School, Lunch School program to provide safe and healthy food. All this has led to petition that we've been getting all the signatures, over 300 signatures within a few days. We need change. We need now. Lynn Public School cannot continue down this road of moldy, rotten food. It has caused for many serious concern and wellbeing of our most vulnerable youngest children, the elementary school. We would like to, to request a public hearing. We would like to form a complaint. We would also like to request an investigation into this problem and take a look into regulations and please currently ensure that the food is safe. Along with this, we would like to inform you that the point of contact, so we can communicate these via pressing issue. So if you can all work together in moving forward to solve this issue, because our kids need us, and they are the future. So we've got to pave the way so that their future can be bright. Because if this is empty, this won't go to here. It doesn't matter how amazing the program is. So I hope that you guys can understand us. This is a very, very serious issue, and as a mother, this is a big concern. And we have over 300 signature just within a few days. So this is a very, very pressing matter. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak? Seeing none. I would, the open mic part of the meeting is closed, and we'll go on to the, the next agenda items on the agenda for tonight. The first on the agenda is the minutes for the, both the Personnel Subcommittee meeting on September 9th of 2021, as well as the minutes for the 13th regular meeting on September 9th of 2021.
Make a motion that the Personnel Subcommittee meeting on September 9th, 2021?
Second.
Be accepted.
Roll call required.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
I make a motion that the 13th regular meeting on September 9th, 2021 be accepted.
Second. Roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Next on the agenda is appointments and elections. Dr. Tutwiler, would you like to speak to that, please?
Glad to. This evening, we've got three nurses for election. Again, really, all of our positions are really important, but really thrilled that we've been able to find three. And credit to the hard work of Director Tanzer and Assistant Director Jackie Westrin. The first is Juliana Grillo. I'm looking for the school committee's support in her election.
Motion to approve? Motion and a second. Roll call required.
Member Castellanos?
Juliana Grillo.
Member Capola?
Juliana Grillo.
Member Ford?
Juliana Grillo.
Member Gaetley?
Juliana Grillo.
Member Nicholson?
Juliana Grillo.
Member Sadowite?
Juliana Grillo.
Mayor McGee?
Juliana Grillo.
The second election we're seeking this evening is for Misseli Grillon de Martinez, for the appointment to, or election to float nurse.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Roll call required.
Member Castellanos?
Misseli Grillon de Martinez.
Member Capola?
Misseli Grillon de Martinez.
Member Ford?
Misseli Grillon de Martinez.
Member Gaetley?
Misseli Grillon de Martinez.
Member Nicholson?
Misseli Grillon de Martinez.
Member Sadowite?
Misseli Grillon de Martinez.
Mayor McGee?
Misseli Grillon de Martinez.
And then finally, seeking the committee's support for the election of Aaron St. Pierre.
Before, I don't know if we had an option for a discussion, because I wanted to kind of ask, I wanted to ask a clarification question in terms of just the numbers. Where are we at with the numbers for nurses? I know when we discussed this early on in the year for staff, and like, what does that look like? And I know we, like, we have the float, I see that we have like a float nurse, and then one-to-one. Could you kind of just differentiate? Is that, is that something that, is that the full-time position as a float?
Floats are full-time positions who aren't assigned to one specific school. They move wherever we need them in a given day. And then the final position is a one-to-one position, likely for a student whose medical fragility calls for that kind of support during the course of the day. I'd say we are very close to a full complement of nurses due to the hard work of the director and assistant director.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Member Sadowite? And just to keep with, I guess, what we're accustomed to, I know that Kathy used to write a letter to us identifying the candidate and the background and her input on that particular candidate. I didn't see it this time around. If we can maybe continue with that tradition, it would be great.
Glad to.
Yes, Dr. Tutwiler.
The final nurse we're seeking election for is Aaron St. Pierre to the, a one-to-one position.
Motion, motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
Roll call required.
Member Castellanos?
Aaron St. Pierre.
Member Capola?
Aaron St. Pierre.
Member Ford?
Aaron St. Pierre.
Member Gaetley?
Aaron St. Pierre.
Member Nicholson?
Aaron St. Pierre.
Member Sadowite?
Aaron St. Pierre.
Mayor McGee?
Aaron St. Pierre. Congratulations to all three, and welcome aboard to, as the discussion continues to the needs that you can meet for the students. So congratulations and welcome aboard. Next on the agenda is presentations. First is the clarification on the home hospital tutoring. Dr. Tutwiler?
Yeah, I'll invite Attorney Gallo to the table. The clicker is right there to advance the slides. Should be good to go. Attorney Gallo's presentation comes on the request of the committee, so I will turn it over to him.
Welcome, Attorney Gallo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler. Members, I'm just going to give some clarifying information tonight on home hospital tutoring. With the return to in-person learning, there's been some confusion about what homeschooling is versus home hospital tutoring versus remote learning. And since some questions have come up, I wanted to explain, and was asked to explain a little bit about what home hospital tutoring is. It's not something that I think probably comes up too often with the school committee. So without further ado.
Do you want to turn the lights off? That might help. That might, that might help. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
All right. So home hospital tutoring is found in the 603 CMR State Regulations, 28.03. And this is the provision, this is the entire law. It says that educational services will occur in a home or a hospital upon a physician's written order that a student is going to be confined to a home or hospital for medical reasons of 14 days or more in a school year. And the regulation notes that the services must not interfere with the medical needs of the student. So this is a real switch from what we normally think about in the Lynn Public Schools. Normally, we're education first. In this case, the fragility of the student means that the medical needs come first, and providing some form of education then is their right, and it's also a matter of compliance. And so it's found here. Again, the services, you know, the educational services, the tutoring cannot interfere with the medical needs of the student, because we're, we're topping? the medical needs of the student, because we're talking about usually serious illness and serious treatment for serious illness, and typically, it's a last resort request, and it's an infrequent request. So that in 2019 through 20, there were only four students in the Lynn Public Schools that received home hospital tutoring. Last year, with remote learning, we were able to leverage that as a way to provide an education, and only two students were home hospital tutored. So that's a total of six students, and again, speaking to the severity of it, we mourn here the loss of two of those six students. So that is the, you know, that's what we're talking about. It's heartbreaking, you know, stuff, unfortunately. I'm just going to back up a little bit to the regulation and what I'll call the elements of the regulation. They are physician's written order, must remain at home or hospital, medical reasons, and not less than 14 days. As to that first part, the physician's order, the regulation says that you have to use a form that DESI provides, and I think your packets have a copy of that form, so I have extras here if anyone needs one. But there are a lot of rules around the form. One rule is that it has to be a physician or a nurse practitioner who completes the form. It cannot be an RN, it cannot be an LPN, it cannot be a medical assistant, it cannot be clerical staff in the doctor's office. Because of the requirements of the regulation, and they say shall, generally, a doctor's note is not sufficient. You need this form to be completed. And what happens a lot of times is the form is not submitted at all. Sometimes we'll get a note from a doctor, or if it is submitted, it'll be signed by clerical staff as opposed to the doctor, and so the Lynn Public Schools works pretty hard with doctors, families, doctors' offices to get this done properly. This is the form that you have in your packet, and you'll note that the form says, just like the regs say, that all fields must be completed in order to request home hospital The, let's see. This year, we've had a little bit of an uptick of requests of home hospital tutoring, and I want to just let you know where that stands. At the time I made your presentation, we had six requests, we're now up to seven, so I've revised slightly. But seven requests thus far this year, compare that to four for two years ago, our last in-person year. I want you to know, though, that four of those seven requests have been approved already, and tutoring is underway in the district. One of those requests have been withdrawn by the family. One of those requests was denied, and the reason for denial is because the student was not going to be out for 14 days. We talked to the doctor's office, so we literally can't provide tutoring in that case. And then there's one last one, we're still working with the doctor's office to try to find out if this is appropriate. There have also been a number of inquiries this year about home hospital tutoring, and that is based on a mistaken belief, including in the medical community, that DESI has a remote option, like they did two years ago. So that's something the members should be thinking about. Families are now accustomed to working from home, students are accustomed to learning from home. That's, again, another reason why parents are asking for this option. And then finally, and my heart goes out to people who have this apprehension, but folks have apprehension, maybe their child is too young to be vaccinated, or they're not vaccinated for whatever reason, and they have apprehension about returning in person, and that's not normally grounds under the regs for home hospital tutoring, but it is something that's coming up this year. So that's a pretty straightforward, I know not the most exciting presentation we've ever had, and hopefully not the most exciting presentation I've ever given, but if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Member Sadowite?
Thanks for clarifying the home hospital tutoring regulation. I remember in, what was it, the seventh grade, I missed two months of school? I didn't have any work to do, though, so I was lucky. But obviously, with COVID, people think if their child is COVID-positive, they don't want them to miss school. So this is where they're looking as an alternative, since we don't have the remote learning in our district. And what you're saying is because the recovery for COVID was more than likely less than 14 days, none of them are going to qualify for it?
Pretty much, because the state has not created another, the state has not amended these regulations with regard to COVID. So for purposes of home hospital tutoring, it's as if COVID never occurred, and so you can have those cases, and also, you know, let's say you're a parent of a six-year-old who can't be vaccinated because of age, they may be apprehensive as well about returning and try to utilize this. But the regs require that the child be confined to the home or hospital for 14 days, and the doctor's required to affirm that on the form, and if they can't affirm that, our hands are tied.
My wife's nurse practitioner, and that is a big thing, is when you affirm, everything falls upon that, so it's a big deal.
That's right.
Are you able to turn that on? Thank you. And just another question, I know that you touched base, thank you, on the, some parents or students don't feel that in-person is safe due to COVID. What if a doctor or a psychiatrist says that mentally, it's not healthy for a student to be there, so they're not allowing them to go back to school at all? Have you seen anything like that?
Not quite to that point yet, but there's no real path that exists for that under the regs, unfortunately. The problem is, the regs talk about confinement to home or hospital. And so the typical case for this is a student who has some kind of, often, cancer diagnosis and treatments that go along with that. So there's been no sort of amending of the regs to account for those types of COVID concerns, and so I think the district, to some extent, and yourselves, to some extent, find you're probably having to explain that, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's tough, it really is. And again, in my line of work as a lawyer, a lot of times when we have to give these forms to doctors to fill out, there's always something missing, unfortunately, and it's important for it to be completely filled out, but I guess what you're doing today is to tell us, really, this is not an alternative for COVID.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, and we continue to work with the doctor's offices to help them as best we can to see if the child falls within this, and if they are, help them with the forms that need to be filled out.
Thank you.
Other questions? Member Gaetley?
I want to thank you very much for this information. I'm glad I have this at my hands, so I can help anybody that may call me with questions on it. So thank you for making this presentation.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Gallo, and that's probably, just to reiterate, I think that DESI has indicated that there is no option for hybrid or remote. It's full in-person. Those are the requirements and the guidelines that we are mandated to follow, and I think it just plays into what you're explaining as well. So there is no, not only is there no option here, but there's no other option, even if it is not, you know, the hospitalization is an option. So I just want to, I think, continue to identify that that's what we face in the city. Any other questions or thoughts? Thank you, Attorney Gallo, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, update on early college promise. Dr. Tutwiler?
Yeah, I actually asked that this go on the agenda, and if Shannon could come forward, because I really see it as a point of celebration. This committee voted last year to, for the district to, you know, take a courageous step in the direction of early college promise in pilot fashion. Just by way of quick reminder, this is the equivalent of the 13th year, where students stay under our sort of umbrella as Lynn Public School students, but are engaged in college classes free of charge. There's a one-page snapshot in your folders, but I asked Shannon just to come and give a quick update.
All right, this will be quick, but it is a really nice, bright spot for us. In the spring, we did recruit 25 students, and we did that partially in a response to COVID. We took on this pilot to just help some students with their first year of college. And over the summer, our new advisor, Christina Pixley, coordinated orientations. Students toured the campus, visited classrooms, went to the bookstore, got their books, got some swag, like sweatshirt. They got their meal plan swipes for Salem State, bus passes, parking passes, new IDs, logged into Canvas, and on September 2nd, all 25 students reported to class, which was, we felt just so encouraging. That's the biggest thing, is just getting your foot on the campus for the first time. So three of the classes that the students attend are co-horted. It's very early days. We recently received a positive report from one of the professors, basically saying that the majority of the class had As and Bs, and only a couple of students had work outstanding for her. We have an advisor working with the students, meeting with them in person twice a week, checking up on them, just being there for them all the time. If we are struggling with a student, then we kick into, let's say, second and third gear, and we bring in more people. So the early college coordinators who recruited them, Frank Sorrow and Kate Copans, were very much connected to them in the spring and the summer, so they are, you know, students that they made a connection with, they're working with. Guidance counselors are still very much connected, which is why I included a picture of Donna Dusette, who actually went up to campus to talk and help a student. So, you know, we expect that this is a first year, it's a protected first year, and all those supports are in place to help students get through this first year. So this is just what I feel is a positive, happy progress report on our first, you know, month of school with Salem State in this program. We think of it as a pilot, and we are hoping to really learn from the pilot. Every situation we encounter, we are looking at what's our tiered intervention for those students, and taking note of that so that as we proceed with it, that we get better and better at it. Any questions?
See some question? Yes, Dr. Tutwiler, please.
I just wanted to add, just quickly, I believe there are five, four or five other districts who are taking this step this year.
Yes.
And all of which were, including us, approached to sort of give this a try. But I just want to, you know, say thank you to Shannon for all of her hard work in making this successful. It doesn't happen, this success doesn't occur by happenstance, it happens because of her efforts and leadership, so just wanted to shout her out.
Great, thank you, Dr. Tutwiler, and thank you, Shannon, for all the work. Member Castellanos, then Member Sadowite, and then Member Ford.
Thank you so much. Again, this is a wonderful program. It's been really humbling to see the progress in this report, you know, tonight, to see the, you know, that we had 25 students, and they're having success. That's remarkable. I did, one of my questions was just answered, was how many other districts were participating? My next question is, is there a max number of students allowed per cohort to participate? So are we maxed out at 25? Or are we allowed to increase those numbers? Because I feel like it would be nice to see if we can get more students involved, even just to increase those numbers as much as possible.
Well, Salem State varies with class size, maximum's 25 or 30, and they had some in there that were 25, so 25 is really the perfect number for that first cohort. This is really like, we're just really on the cutting edge in the state with these cities that are doing this, so I think that's anyone's guess as to how far it can expand, but it's, I mean, it's a beautiful idea, so hopefully it will.
And then my next question is the data. You know, when we're measuring, while we're cultivating those data points, where is your focus? Like, what's going to be our area of attention to really elevate this to the next level? As we see this, obviously, we have a great program, and we're looking to, if we, when we put ourselves in a pivot to grow, to see any type of sustainable growth with this program, as you say, there's five other districts. Have you met with those other districts to, do you guys have a network to communicate? How is it working for the other districts? How's it working for us as an urban district? Are there any other, are there urban districts involved with this program?
All urban.
All?
To my knowledge, yeah.
For all urban? Well, which is fabulous. So I bet there's probably a good network of, as what they're doing, and maybe, I don't know if that's already happening.
We were part of a network in the spring, and I'm assuming that is going to resume in the fall, but we haven't resumed it. But at the same time, we've made connections across those districts so that I can call and reach out. I know them by name, so I can, you know, if I'm really having an issue that's more than we, you know, that I want to say, hey, what are you doing?
Thank you very much.
Member Sadowite?
Thank you for the update. I can tell you that the first month is normally the hardest, especially for new students going into college, so I'm glad that you gave us the update now. So are these 11th graders?
They are, well, it's really like their 13th year, so they deferred graduation, and they're experiencing their first year still under the wing of LPS.
So technically, they've passed the 12th grade, and now they're just in their first year of college?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, we're not, I don't think that we're going to be calling it 13th year, we're going to be calling it early college promise year.
Okay, okay. What I thought when we were doing that is, we were going to get two years under their belt, so we thought we were doing it during, they were going to do some college classes during the 12th grade, and then a year after that.
So you're right, part of the program is that the whole program is really designed so that by the end of that first promise year, you can have enough credits to earn either an associate's or actually be almost halfway through college, if you went to like a Salem State. So we went ahead with that, we went ahead with the promise year without having all those credits under the belts of those students, because our program didn't, isn't built up yet to have that many credits. But over, like, a long-term design, we're going to build up to those number of credits.
So you started at 13th, and then your hope is to get to the 12th, to add the two years for the program?
Right.
Okay. And what is the makeup of the students that were selected for the program?
I'm going to have to give, I'm going to have to compile the demographics for you, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, okay. And this is only with Salem State, we're not going to do it with North Shore Community College? I thought we mentioned both schools?
I think that North Shore Community College is definitely in the plans.
Okay.
Dr. Tutwiler?
Yeah, I don't expect you to remember this from last year, but the idea is that, as Shannon was just describing, this is really, even though we started it this year, this is, the vision for the program is that it really starts your freshman, your sophomore year, and you're earning credits all along, and depending on which pathway you're interested in, you would either go to North Shore or Salem State, but in this inaugural year, you know.
Yeah, like, she's starting backwards, which is fine. Yeah. I think these students will definitely benefit substantially, being in another year of high school and learning that. But I'd love to know the demographics of them. Is there an application that you're having people fill out?
Yes.
Okay. If you can share that with us, I'd like that as well.
And I do want to clarify one thing, because Dr. Tutwiler did ask me for all the demographics, and I did send him the whole, the list of students, so that was highly reflective of our student body.
Okay, okay. So it reflects the numbers that we currently have, and if you can share the, just the application, I'd love to see what it asks. But great job, and I think that this is a wonderful addition to our district, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Member Ford, and then Member Nicholson.
Do they actually, the 25 students actually earn college credits?
Yes.
This year, and if so, how many?
They can earn up to.
Can they?
They can earn up to 15, so they're all enrolled in five classes. We hope that they, well, that's not true. So 15 this semester, 15 next semester, 30.
Three credits normally per class.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Some are four, if they have a lab with them.
Member Nicholson?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. This is really an exciting update. I think it's a tremendous initiative, and, you know, something that a lot of students have taken advantage of over the years, and it's so nice to see some, this structure coming together to turn into the program it is. I know it requires a lot of planning to make these different sort of bureaucracies talk to each other, and so really appreciate all that work, and obviously, the students who are willing to put in this extra work to be pioneers. I mean, we're asking them to be pioneers in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for creating this new sort of like K through for creating this new sort of like K through 12 plus system. So, that's really exciting. My question was around the, I think, and I think one of the keys of the program that you mentioned is the advising, the support services that, you know, are there for students to help them succeed and make that transition. What does that look like for like the end of the year in terms of, like, who is responsible for the counseling of students about next steps? Since that, there's, you know, it's a different conversation than maybe we're used to at LPS about next steps at that level.
So, I, our counselor there is, our coordinator there who works with them is an LPS employee, not a Salem State employee. However, I mean, it is important for us, for students to get really attached to the college. I mean, if they all went to Salem State in their sophomore year, that would be terrific. I mean, because that would show that they, they love it there and they want to persist there. With that said, if there's a student who has their dreams set elsewhere and this is a launchpad for them, we want to be there for those students too. So, I mean, we wanted them to get settled in, but it really is time for them to be actually applying to college. So, I mean, we're going to be letting them settle in a little bit, but then we're going to be talking to them each individually about their post-secondary plans.
Great, great. And then I guess sort of along those lines, you know, in a pilot, one of the keys is sort of being able to understand, going into what our question is so that we can figure out if we've answered the question or not. What's our sense, and you mentioned one of the keys, you know, measures of success is the matriculation, I guess, whether it be Salem State or another foreign university. But so, how are we thinking about that? And also, do we have a sense of what the state is looking for in the, you know, because they're clearly interested in this, in this program?
I'm wondering, in terms of what the state is looking for, I think that, I think that this was, this is something that they see successful in other states and this is something that they wanted to do for students. And it's really all part of an equity mission. It's all around equity and it's getting students to, to improve those numbers of students who persist in college.
Dr. Tuttwiler?
I was actually just going to build on that, that idea that, you know, this is part of the statewide early college initiative, which is anchored in a deep belief that, you know, if a student takes even one early college course and successfully completes it, the likelihood of them graduating from college goes up, you know, markedly. And so, this might be one of those things where the measure of success is actually two years after the student finishes, well, one, well, how do I say this? Years after they actually complete that year of the early college promise. I said two years because really the idea is for them, or the ideal is for them to, upon completion of their early college promise year, be halfway through college. So.
So, will we be maintaining that data about their college enrollment? Okay, great. That makes sense. Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. This is awesome.
Member Gaetly?
Well, I just want to thank you for doing this and giving us this update. And it seems like you have really covered all the angles that we need for success in the future with this pilot. And I'm sure our community is going to be thankful and thankful to all of us for having this program to help their children continue on in college. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Shannon. Member Capola?
Oh, Shannon, I'm sorry. You thought you were off the hot seat. No, I was just wondering, because we never talk financial part of it. What, is there a cost to the students? Do they have to use their FASR? Or if they don't have that, or is this something that we're paying? Or is it state who's asking, you know?
No, this is completely at no cost to the students. All of those details that I gave you of what the students received and everything, that is all part of the Smith Family Foundation grant.
Okay.
And, but, but by being in part of Lynn Public Schools, that's generating funding that will become a continuous funding source.
Great. That's good. It's great for the kids. Yeah, thank you.
Shannon, thank you very much. Great work.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Shannon, thank you.
She was my teacher.
Next on the agenda are personnel procedures. Dr. Tuttwiler?
Yeah, I'll just frame this. It's, the school committee or a school committee member asked that this be put on the agenda. And frankly, I'm not surprised. And I'll tell you that the Personnel Department, HR is in the midst of an evolution, which is causing change. And sometimes with change comes some questions about procedures and experiences that are different. At the beginning of the school year or right before it started, we talked about, or I talked about a theme for the year of stabilized heal transform, which, you know, is a large catchment, really reflecting all of the initiatives happening in the district. Under the term transform, there's transformation happening in the Welcome Center, there's transformation happening in Curriculum Department, and there's transformation happening in HR as well. And so, this isn't really a presentation. Carrie's here to answer any questions that the committee might have. But I think you'll hear in her responses how what's different is reflective of a transformation.
Questions from members? Member Capola?
Hi, Carrie, how are you?
Nice to see you.
Yep. What, what were some of the major changes that you had?
So, I started in July and it's now almost October. There haven't been huge changes. What I've tried to do is triage a very busy year. This has been a year like no other. All of my colleagues in other districts, we are all short-staffed. We are all scrambling. So, a few of the things that I've implemented is trying to better utilize the system that was already in place when I got here, which was the Talent Ed, which is the electronic application process. And I've explained it this before. We got it as a Band-Aid. I think we started our first year last year. So, we sort of used it, and I use the analogy of the alphabet. We're using LMNOP. I have to go back to A and I have to build it out to Z to get through the whole kit and caboodle of it. It's a robust program. We're not utilizing it. One of the things that I did implement is allowing principals to get, I'm able to post things faster and get that information out and work with principals to get people processed a little bit faster. There were so many applicants and candidates in hiring this year. I think we topped over 260 at the end of the day, that it was really overwhelming, I'll be honest. But we are, we're at the, at the point where now I'm starting to fix things and make things more streamlined. One of the first things, and I know Dr. Tuttwiler will appreciate this, I'm going to make it easier for the principals moving forward. They don't have to send a letter. There's no more Dear Dr. Tuttwiler letter. It's just all automated through the system. So, that will free up their time to be able to search for candidates and get better candidates and foster those candidates through the process and then allow us in the HR department to also do that.
Okay. And one of the questions that we've kind of had, or me in particular, but I think other people have had the same questions, is the change in not using the, the Z admin, you know, because they're, like, that requires them to keep going in to the Talent Ed and checking jobs. Is that, I mean, is it that simple or?
So, it's, it's simple in terms of, as a former teacher myself, getting multiple emails every time that there's a new opening. Using Z admin for that is actually, okay, if I ever want to look back for it, then I have to look in my email. So, what I've been doing, I think I've been doing it for the last four weeks pretty religiously. And Sheila will get me on it if I don't. On Fridays, I send out an update. And on every email that I do send out, the Talent Ed is down at the bottom, the link. We actually have a QR code for it as well. So, when we go out for recruiting, when I get to that part next year, we'll be able to better utilize that. But for the teachers, I feel like if there's going to be something sent out, it needs to be something that they need to open every time. Especially if it's coming from central office, it needs to be that important. And all the jobs are important. But if we do it weekly with an update, then they're, they have access to all of them. Right now, it's to two pages of vacancies and I'm working on cleaning that up because I don't think that that's actually accurate any longer.
So, is the, is the weekly update come out on that Z admin?
Uh huh, yeah.
Oh, it does?
So, I send an email out saying that there's, that these are the most recent postings. And so, every Friday, I just send it out once.
Okay. And I know, I guess, I don't quite understand it, but I guess a lot of the clerks do. And they were waiting for the clerk bid, which they normally have on the beginning of September. So, are they still waiting for that?
Nope, that's, that's been sent out.
Okay. Do you know when?
Um, that was, I think the last one was sent out yesterday and it's scheduled for October 6th, next week.
Okay. Just, you know, there's always a question all the time that we're not being, being open. And so, I think people are kind of feeling like, you know, the change and maybe they weren't aware of the changes. And it's caused some issues of concern. So, I think just if we communicate with our staff better on, you know, how the changes are going to be and which, which direction we have to look now.
I think when we, when I'm able to better utilize Talent Ed, it will be, that's, that's the program that we're using. That will be beneficiary, beneficial to all the staff because they can actually go into it right now and do their salary increments. So, it's actually going to provide more services all the way down the line. So, if we start with the hiring process and we build it the way it's, it needs to be built, it's hiring all the way through retirement. So, there are, so there are things in that process. And as I build them, I will more than happily send out all the emails. The, most of my staff have always been kind of sick of seeing me pop up with an email. But I try to put out all the information.
Okay. And for, for new employees, that's what they use also is Talent Ed?
That's how we're getting our applicants.
Okay.
We still get applicants inland by virtue of, if a principal knows of someone, they get a hard resume. I'm going to switch that into getting them to, when they get the hard resume, they're welcome to interview that person, absolutely. But have them start the process in Talent Ed because it's actually a records management piece as well. And we've talked about getting all of our records in one place and having them electronic, which would free up a lot of space in this building, by the way.
Yeah. And just one quick thing. You know, I've heard from a lot of people who are trying to apply, there's something before Talent Ed. You have, what do you have to register or?
So, you do, you set up an account.
Before you get to the application, set up the account.
And you set up the account and it goes through.
Okay. Is that pretty standard in other places too?
It absolutely is. And the nice thing actually about using Talent Ed is, not that I want any of our applicants to apply to other places, but if they have applied to other places, they can actually quickly transfer their information into our application.
Okay.
So, there's a way that it links up. So, if they've applied in Boston, they can actually click over and send all of their stuff. And their application process for us is that much simpler.
Okay, thank you.
Member Sadaway, then Member Castellanos.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. And I was a part of the interview committee where we interviewed you. And we talked about, you know, the needs of the district, the needs of our staff and how important that was. I just have a couple of questions. One of the questions we asked during the interview was what, what will you do to learn the needs of this particular department? What have you done to learn the needs of the, of the Human Resource Department?
So, being in it for, what is it now, three months, there were a lot of needs. Instead of making big sweeping changes, I've actually been working on like the, what people would say, you know, I've rolled up my sleeves, I've done it all. So, working with all of my staff and learning their jobs because a lot of them are very separate and I'm trying to get people cross-trained. We had a lot of turnover when I first got there. We had some vacations. So, out of necessity, I've had to jump in. Out of necessity, I've made sure that other people know how to back each other up. And so, that's one of the biggest needs, I think, is the cross-training, getting us through this, this first hiring season. The timing of my hire was, I knew it was coming, let's put it that way. But it was, it was very big. So, moving forward, I thought I would take a breath in October and that's kind of what I'm planning on doing, bringing them all together again, doing the cleanup on Talent Ed and moving forward now. So, the greatest need, I think, is just to understand how we can work together as a team.
And my second question was, what have you done to build a team atmosphere? And it sounds like that you were doing two in one. Okay, okay. Now, for postings, are you posting all job postings on a particular day or whenever they come along?
I just post them as they come along. If someone, we, you know, we had a resignation, I can put it up that quickly. And that's really good, especially as we move forward into next season of recruiting. The quicker we can be out there online and have an online presence, will get applicants interested in us. So, we really want to build that piece as well.
And when you send the email to Z admin with the open positions, are you doing that on a particular day? Is that on a Friday? Okay. So, say you post something on a Monday, our internal staff wouldn't get your Z admin until Friday, which would lose, what, three or four days?
Yes, except the issue, well, for the internal candidates right now, the jobs that we're posting currently wouldn't be jobs for internal. So, when we go to the, the part of the year where we would be posting internally, that would be, that's a whole different
Okay.
type of situation. Because I would want those to go out.
Of course.
But also, by that time, they will know in their mind that everything is posted live. Those would also probably be posted on a particular day anyway. Those probably wouldn't, those wouldn't come up.
Okay, okay, good. I just want to make sure that there's not a missed opportunity there.
Absolutely.
And what are you, one of the things that we talked about during, obviously, the interview was having so many schools, you know, could, could obviously be an issue. Some people might feel as though they're not being heard in a certain area because they're so far away from central or whatnot. What, what are you doing to build unity and making sure our staff and, and the district are being heard, especially now through Human Resources?
So, now I'm into my second phase. I needed to get through hiring. I decided I'll take a deep breath in October and I actually get to start that now. It really, I really haven't been afforded the time
Mm-hmm.
to do something like that. I do want to visit all the schools. I do have plans to educate our staff on what Human Resources hasn't been able to do for them, like, you know, prior to my arrival. There's a lot of issues, you know, being able to talk to them about what's an FMLA leave?
Hmm.
What do you do that here? The other thing I'd like to build in Talent Ed is making things some, some automated processes. If they have a leave of absence, you can actually build those things. So, I do have some lofty goals and I want to make that part easier. But the, the face-to-face, I do like to go out to the schools. I literally have not had time to do so yet.
Okay. And I appreciate your, your, your ability to come here and not know what we're going to ask you and to be able to, to respond to it. And I'm, you know, I don't want you to tell me things that I want to hear. I want you to tell me the things that I need to hear, which is, it's been so busy.
I literally have to go to the school site.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
On a few occasions, yeah.
So, I appreciate that. And, you know, the biggest thing I think this district needs is unity. And, and obviously, the staff needs to feel like they're part of a larger team. And I know, I think we've only done it twice. Well, maybe two years ago, we did it at City Hall where everyone came together. And then this past year, we did it at Manon Field, which was great. I couldn't get in, but I could see from the outside that it was a great event. And, you know, I would like to see stuff like, that we can, that we can do to bring people together to feel like they're part of a bigger team. Thank you.
Member Castellanos?
So, I want to thank you so much for being here tonight. It's really, it's, it's great to have you and your leadership out there, you know, getting out there and just working with the staff and, and really identifying where the needs are. You know, some of the needs, you know, we, I don't want to get too far into it. As you said, October, you got a couple of months in. Retention. I think retention and resignations are very important areas that, you know, obviously, you know, we're not going to just snap the finger and it's just going to have this automatic wand of, of solution. But some of those areas, when you talk about needs, you know, diversifying our staff, making sure that we retain our most valuable staff members, identify- um, identifying, um, packages in, in terms of just personnel, figuring out what's going to be, uh, competitive across the district. We lose a lot of folks to Boston Public Schools, and, but, you know, when we, when we see the warrants and resignations, you know, you see some of those names in there, and some, you know, you get staff that have been here for some time now, we want to, we're looking to make sure we retain those staff, um, and, you know, as you have a, a month of, you know, like you said, you're in this transition, I think identifying key areas of, of strategy and just ways to, again, like, as, as Attorney Sadowite mentioned, what we need to hear, uh, not necessarily what we want to hear, but we need to figure out where the, where the needs are, uh, and where we can apply our resources, and really, you know, it's really, it's important to, to do that.
Um, retention is a, a big, um, issue for a lot of districts, but there are a lot of positives in, inland, and I think building a homegrown base of teachers, um, and ha, and having that, I think, we, we, there are a lot of things in place right now that, once I get to them, we can, we can definitely build on them. But we also, um, we don't have a big online presence, so I think there are a lot of things in Lynn that people don't know about. Um, and so that's, that's a piece that I definitely want to promote, and when we start, I, I, I really think, I don't know, I think we're going to have a really normal recr, I, I want a normal recruiting year next year, um, whatever normal is. So I want to be able to present Lynn in that way and, and say, you want to come work for us, you want to stay with us, these are the things that we will support you in, and we've, and there's been, there is a lot in Lynn that I don't think people know about.
I agree. Member Gailey?
Good evening, when you say "we," who are you in reference to? All of us, how about in your office?
In our, in the office, I think we're all, we all do the work in our office, but I think we as a community need to present ourselves, um, when we do recruiting. Um, right now, the, the women that I work, I'm working with, and they're clerks, and they haven't done the recruiting piece, I would love to have them come out. We were at, um, the opening, uh, the preschool, you know, right before school started, and they were excited to be there. I, I brought two of them, and, and they were, it, it wasn't, it wasn't fruitful because it was more geared towards parents, and we didn't get any candidates, but they understood, they got out there, and they understood, like, the importance to be representing Lynn and having them, having people come to us.
Yeah, I, I love the clerks in that office, I, I think the world of them, yeah.
So I'd like to foster that and bring them out and, and have them understand, because I think that they've been in there too, not too long, but just in their, in the work, and they don't get to see the work that they actually do, like the, the effects of it.
Well, I'm glad to know that you're appreciating the clerks.
I am.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is new business, um, Dr. Tutwiler, there's a, a request for a donation, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I'm looking for the committee's support, uh, to accept a donation of $250 to Marshall Middle School from Glenn Jackson, uh, the Springfield Telescope Makers Club, uh, for the purchase of a telescope as a prize for a student.
Motion to accept.
Second.
A roll call required.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is, um, the teachers' union requests to extend the three collective bargaining agreements in each of its provisions, provisions, until the parties have ratified successor agreements. Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a second, motion approved and second, roll call required.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we'll go to, uh, your, your, after this, uh, there's a request, uh, there's a, on the agenda is to vote to cancel the 17th regular meeting on November 11th, which is Veterans Day, the 18th regular meeting on November 25th, which is Thanksgiving, and the 20th regular meeting on December 30th, which is in the Christmas vacation. Motion to cancel. Motion on the table, and is there a second?
Second.
Roll call required.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Uh, next on the agenda, and Dr. Tutwiler, uh, you're, um, I think you're prepared to make a presentation, the allocation plan for ESER III funds.
I did, uh, wandering around the, this room during the meeting, sorry about that.
Preparing for the presentation.
Preparing for the presentation, yes, sir. So, uh, last week, uh, the, go ahead.
Uh, are we supposed to have a draft version?
You're holding it.
Yeah, so it's supposed to say draft, just want to make sure.
Uh, uh, not until, if you want to change something, then I'll think, you know, I will make those changes, then I'll take the draft off. Uh, and actually, I was just going to speak to that, you received, um, a draft allocation report, uh, which outlined, um, how the, uh, allocation plan, uh, came together, uh, and the kinds of things that, um, funds would be spent on, and I'm talking specifically about, uh, the federal, uh, federal grant, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, also known as ESER. Uh, I purposely made that report, or put that report in draft form, uh, in the event that, uh, there was something that needed to be changed before I posted it and shared it, uh, with families. What I'd like to do, uh, with, with the time that I have, is talk a little bit about, uh, the grant and a little bit about how, uh, that plan came together, and then share the actual plan, and then answer any questions you might have. Uh, I think everyone in the room is intimately aware of, uh, the opportunity, funding opportunity that we have before us. This opportunity comes from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, uh, of 2021. The education piece of that act is known as the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, uh, or ESER. The big idea behind these funds is to meet student needs, students' academic and mental health needs related to COVID-19 pandemic, and to support schools in remaining open. The allocation for Lynn is a little more than $42 million, uh, and we have three years to spend it. Uh, there's quite a bit of text on this slide, I, I apologize for that, uh, but I just want to give, uh, all who are watching, as well as the committee, a reminder, uh, on how these, um, funds can be spent. Uh, I think it's easier to briefly touch on, uh, that for which the funds cannot be used. Uh, we cannot purchase or build buildings. Uh, we also cannot use it for building renovations or updates that exceed $30,000 without permission, and I want to underscore without permission, it's not saying that you can't do renovations or, uh, updates, uh, related to COVID-19 safety, uh, it just requires permission from DESI if it exceeds $30,000. Uh, conversely, the funds can be used for almost anything one can think of related to recovery from the pandemic. That includes, but is not limited to, student learning initiatives and programs, mental health programs, technology, professional learning, and so forth. Uh, it's easiest to think of the fund expenditures in three big buckets. Learning recovery or academics, by rule, uh, 20% or a little more than $8 million needs to be spent in that category. All matters related to the social and emotional well-being of our students, and then finally, operations, which can be facilities-related improvements related to safety during the pandemic. For example, uh, changing all of the water fountains in a building to bottle-filling stations, or ventilation projects might be viable expenditures. Given its rich diversity, the approach to stakeholder input, uh, from the Lynn Public Schools community offered multiple accessibility points. Uh, there was a survey that was developed and translated into the five most prominent languages spoken in the district. Outreach on this oper, on the opportunity to provide input through the survey happened in the form of all calls to families, text messages, social media, and website posts. Further, to ensure that stakeholders representing groups of students who have unique needs, uh, had an opportunity for impact, the survey was sent directly to the members of the English Learner and Special Education Parent Advisory Councils. It should also be noted that there was a community-wide virtual town hall that was held on September 20th, some of you were able to attend. Uh, this was a live, interactive opportunity for families to hear about the substance of the funding opportunity, ask questions, and give direct input on priorities or strategies, uh, to address student need. Uh, quickly, as a result of that effort, uh, you can see on this slide the breakdown of participation. Uh, nearly 3,700 respondents representing various stakeholders in our schools and in the broader community. Uh, just by, by way of brief comment, uh, the very first bullet, uh, says family or caregiver, those are households. Uh, we have approximately 7,000 households in the Lynn Public Schools, so that, uh, participation rate, assuming that one person participated per household, is around 20%. Um, the same is so for students, uh, we did send, uh, the survey directly to students in grades, uh, six through 12, a little more than 1,000, uh, participated. Teachers, and then we broke out, uh, other educators and administrators just to get a sense for the differing, uh, the varying perspectives, which I'll speak to, uh, in just a moment. And then, uh, really strong participation from, uh, community agencies in Lynn, uh, and then the final bullet represents people who identify themselves as representing the interests of students with disabilities, English learners, and others. Uh, that's not to say that people in the other categories don't also represent that particular, um, descriptor. A little hard to read on that from this point, uh, but I will post this, actually, um, the next, uh, slides, which, uh, break down, uh, the survey responses and feedback, is already on our website, uh, and I've not sent out things to, a communication to families on that, but, uh, I'll talk more about that in just a second. Uh, respondents were asked to identify at a high level what they would prioritize in addressing learning recovery and impact of COVID. They were allowed up to four choices. All of the choices are aligned to allowable expenditures for the ESER III funds. As you can see here, respondents identified facility improvements, access to high-quality materials, academic intervention, and social-emotional supports as the four priorities. Respondents were also asked to stu, specific, asked specifically about learning recovery and which strategies should be considered. Notably, a focus on instructional materials, after-school programming, and during-the-day small-group instruction were top selections among all respondents. It should be noted here that summer school was the least selected. We also broke out, uh, uh, the student data, and it was way low, uh, on that one. Finally, uh, respondents were invited to give more input on addressing social-emotional needs. Again, there was an emphasis on curriculum, uh, and programs and, uh, support, meeting, on meeting students' emotional needs. Uh, there was also heavy emphasis on counseling services for students and professional learning for teachers and other staff around social and emotional learning. In addition to the questions aligned to the eligible expenditures, participants were invited to give narrative feedback with the following prompt, please share any additional feedback you might have on how the Lynn Public Schools can use ESER funding, ESER III funding to meet the needs of our students and staff. An analysis of the narrative feedback reflected an emergence of eight overarching themes presented in order of frequency from the respondents. Those themes are learning recovery, with an emphasis on decreasing class size, mental and physical health, which is the second one, which all, which involved expanding access to resources in these realms, addressing facility needs, which, according to the feedback, called for new schools, uh, which we can't do, in addition to ventilation and other facilities challenges, uh, and then increased pay or benefits for staff, which speaks for itself. Uh, general safety, ranging from the addition of school resource officers to expanded vaccine opportunities, uh, addressing transportation challenges, expanding the use of, use and frequency of technology, and then finally, options for students, uh, improved options for students for lunch, particularly at the elementary level. Uh, we've carefully analyzed the data and input. Related, it's important to note that the priorities differed, uh, depending on which, uh, group was responding. Here, for example, you can see that students, teachers, and families, or caregivers, uh, as a group identified, as a group, uh, gravitated toward, uh, slightly different priorities. Most students identified, uh, access to high-quality instructional materials and assessments. Teachers identified adding more staff as a top priority, while families requested improvements to facilities. While there might be difference between the priorities, there are strong link, linkages between the priorities. Honoring input from all stakeholders and district insight on addressing student need, three themes capture, uh, and frame the allocation plan, and that is learning recovery and acceleration, well-being, and healthy schools. And I'll talk a little bit about each, uh, and what I'm proposing, uh, the allocation amount or percentage to be. On learning recovery and acceleration, uh, this includes a broad set of initiatives designed to eliminate learning gaps created or broadened due to circumstances related to the COVID-19 pandemic. They include, but are not limited to, after-school tutoring, some summer learning programs, special education compensatory programs, during-the-day acceleration and intervention programming, instructional tech, technology equipment, and related staffing additions and professional development. I'm proposing that 55% or 23 million, a little more than 23 million, uh, be allocated, uh, in that category. The social-emotional, uh, mental and physical well-being of students and staff is critical and core to the, uh, progress on all facets of the work with students. Well-being initiatives supported by this funding include the expansion of access to clinical supports in schools and related staffing additions and professional development. It also includes refining and/or expanding existing social-emotional learning initiatives and clinical services. I'm proposing that 25% or a little more than $10 million be allocated in that realm. And then finally, uh, the area that we're calling healthy schools. Uh, healthy schools builds upon an ongoing effort to ensure that all LPS facilities are fully aligned with the Center for Disease Control Standards for Safety. This includes, but is not limited to, ventilation repairs, uh, upgrades and related projects, and enhancements to buildings that support safe and learning-conducive experience for students and staff. Uh, this is clearly the facilities piece of the allocation plan. I just would ask that all bear in mind that, uh, by rule, any single expenditure over $30,000 requires DESI approval. Uh, and again, my proposal is, uh, that 20% or a little more than $8 million, uh, be allocated in this particular realm. Uh, should also say, uh, that, uh, Mike Donovan, uh, has done an assessment and, uh, a cost estimate on some related projects, uh, that almost exactly line up with that, uh, dollar amount, and they're ventilation projects and things of that nature. In terms of next steps, I intend to form, uh, an advisory, well, which I spoke about- In terms of next steps, I intend to form an advisory, which I spoke about when I laid out the plan for collecting input, which again is a representative group of stakeholders who will serve as partners, thought partners, and provide perspective as we continue to work with this incredibly important resource. The grant is due soon, although I've heard smatterings of information out there about extensions, but we're prepared to submit next week. I think I will, oh, well, upon the grant approval, which I assume will take about a month, Mr. McHugh, or thereabout, we'll then begin to drill down to the next level of specificity in partnership with the advisory to begin leveraging these funds to do the work.
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. Member Castellanos, then Member Sadoway.
Dr. Tuttwiler, thank you very much for your very comprehensive breakdown of our funding that the federal government's going to be passing on to us. So I have a couple of questions regarding some of the logistics. As we're going to, you know, there's $42 million on the table with the timeline of three years. If we don't reach the full amount in that three years, are we going to see a penalty? That's my first question. Another question is about when we have expenditures, or when we say we're going to spend a certain amount, and you said broad twice, when the auditors are going to look at expenditures, they'd like to see clear, precise, how we spend that money. And I say that through, due to some experiences with the recent audit on a nonprofit board I'm on, so I got to work with the federal folks on some funds from, you know, as, you know, folks got so much money that they weren't really, they were just broadly putting out there on expenditures. That's something that needs oversight. What will be the checks and balances throughout the three years? I can imagine Kevin's going to be part of that process, but what can we do to ensure that we do not incur cost efficiencies that's going to really impact us? Because, you know, being broad is, and that's a lot of money, I understand why, but when it comes to a federal audit, they don't really, they're very cut and dry, so I think it's important.
Yeah, so I use that word, I work backwards. I use that word intentionally because what I'm saying here this evening on September 30th is that these funds, if you think about that first, the learning, recovery, and acceleration, there's a lot of things that fall under that. And Mr. McHugh and I have reviewed the grant application, and it calls for some level of specificity with the application, but they know that I might, you know, districts might not know explicitly how they're going to spend those funds over the course of three years right now. But we can say definitively, these kinds of programs, during-the-day interventions, where possible and appropriate, the addition of new staff, things, things of that nature. And so we'll be able to add that level of specificity in the grant application, but certainly, much as we've done, almost like what we've done with the titles, like we are, we have built-in systems that are pretty robust, that I credit the deputy superintendents for developing, for capturing every penny and how it's spent and how it aligns with a particular intention, whether it's, you know, learning recovery or mental health or so forth. And so Mr. McHugh will be hard at work in ensuring that there is incredible oversight, but then also working with the deputies to ensure that the data capture for federal reporting is on point. The, I don't know the answer to that first question, like what happens if you get to 2024 and there's whatever number of money left over, but I bet you that if I look over at Kevin now, he would chuckle because he knows that I don't leave money on the table.
May I?
Please.
So, just to reiterate what the superintendent said, the deputies created about a year or so ago a template we've used for our titles, so anyone in the building that's going to apply to use those titles, we have like, almost like a mini-application form, and it really explicitly states what the funds are going to be used for. So we're using that for all of these ESER grants, so that when we do the audit, I've been through federal audits, so I know exactly what is going to happen, and I will guarantee the, Logan Airport's right there, this will be the first stop when this is done to come here, and they're going to look through the books, page by page. So that application will be the cover sheet, all the purchasers, contracts, everything will go behind it, we're going to be creating that in a detailed file, so that when they come in, they'll just be able to go through binder after binder and have all the expenditures so they align with what we're spending on. And as far as the end date, the re-answer today would be, if we don't spend it, we don't take it, we don't get it. We get it, we actually request these monies as we go and expend them, so, but as the superintendent said, he'll spend money the same way like three different times, so we have to have a keepman check on that. I think we'll be spending all the funds down.
Stephanie Superintendent.
Can I just, Kim and I, when we developed the titles form, we call it the proposal, on that proposal form, people who are filling it out have to put in what data they're going to collect and submit, showing that what they're proposing is, has been successful, what their goals are, how many students is it impacting, like there's lots of questions on it. We took that titles proposal form that we designed, it, the titles one is blue, and we created the ESER form, which is green, same form, asked similar questions, and we now have a binder system that luckily Deb Johnson kind of oversees for us. And we can go into that binder at any time, we approve the proposal documents before any money can be spent, and it's a pretty detailed process. So we're following the same process with the ESER forms.
And that's why when we formed the advisory, they're going to, you guys are going to prepare, I can imagine when you see 42, that's a lot of money, and obviously the operation changes, you know, you have a great template that you're working from. I think that's something that you guys plan on doing when you do, who's going to be part of that advisory is why, I just.
So the advisory is more like, would not handle the back end of that, I mean, that would be out of the business office and with the deputies. The advisory is really an advisory to me. And as we think about, you know, what these initiatives look like, you know, what we want, you know, kids to feel like, what we want staff to feel like, what we want available for people, those, I see the advisory as being a really incredible space where conversations can be had, and it'll just add deeper perspective as we're thinking about implementation. And so I've not set the advisory up, but I envision it looking a lot like the diverse group that worked with us in the development of our strategic plan, which, you know, included teachers, parents, community-based members, there were some elected officials involved. So I see this being a diverse group.
Thank you.
Member Sadoway.
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler, for the presentation. As you know, and we all know, that Lynn Public Schools has many needs, and I'm happy that we're getting this lump of money to address those. One of the things I do want to say, and I hope we continue to do this, but I want to keep doing this type of input every year, not just for ESER funds, I think that it's a great opportunity to hear from the community. And another thing that I was gracious to see is that we're not all crazy when we bring up stuff, because a lot of the stuff that we brought up over the year seemed to be a priority. Was it April of last year I brought up the facilities and the fact that these buildings were old and sending our teachers there could definitely increase the risk of spreading the virus? And we talked about this and why the air quality reports were important. And I believe that the air quality reports were done in August of last year.
Correct.
Okay. And then.
A little bit later, but yes.
Around that time. And then we talked about the ventilations and how we were going to allocate money that we already had had to spend for the improvement of the ventilations. Why, we were told that that was going to cover the costs of that, why are we now spending another $8 million on this, on, it seems like the same thing?
It's not. These are other elements of, you know, sometimes it's boilers, other elements of the HVAC operation, that I am not a, an expert on that, but there is a very clear document that Mike Donovan has drawn up, gotten professional estimates on, that I am happy to share.
Well, I would love to see it, obviously, because if we've already allocated money towards the ventilation, and now we're spending more money, this money, if it's not, if it's being used to reimburse the city for certain things, or, that's my question, or is it being used to actually do the work?
I'm happy to speak to that. The initial investment was the 10 school buildings. This is separate from those 10 buildings, there's other issues in other buildings that reflect substantial need, you know, they have a system going, but to upgrade those systems, and I think getting the report would be helpful, all the members, but it is not, the money is not being utilized for the same purpose. The original dollars we allocated were for the 10 schools that were 100 years old and didn't really have any ventilation systems at that point, and they're just, I think, about completed, we can get that as well, in terms of all that work going on. So that would, so those dollars are separate dollars going to other needs throughout the facilities in the district.
Okay, because so the 10 schools that were picked, I remember saying, well, what about the other ones? And we were told, these are the ones that need to be corrected, but now we're saying, oh, now we've expanded it to include other schools, even schools that were brought up, you know, we got calls from people like, wait, my school's like this, why isn't it included in the 10? And my response was, there was a study done, and it's sufficient. But now we're saying, we're going to address all of the schools that need addressing, and as long as that's the case, then I'm fine. So it's not just, I just want to make sure that when people are saying, hey, we're not on this list, and, you know, there's mold here, there's this, that's, and the other, and we bring it up to you, and you, and we're told, hey, there's been an air quality report here, the quality's good, this is good, so we're not going to address these things, but now we're saying, hey, we're going to address additional things. So I just wanted to make sure that that was the case.
Can I just speak to that really quickly?
Dr. Tuttwiler.
Remember, recall that the work, the $6 million allocated for the 10 schools was to install ventilation, fresh air systems, in buildings that did not have them. What's in this proposal is, has nothing to do with those buildings, but repairs, refinements, enhancements to other buildings that are much in need. That is to say, I mean, we did both an air quality and an airflow test. The airflow test was in every single room in this district, every office, every single room. And where there was a need, we addressed those small repairs, but this is a much more robust effort that is really about fixes that will increase the longevity of those systems in those buildings.
And obviously, we have a plan, the mayor put it in place with regards to the school buildings and city buildings, and when they need to be replaced. I, you know, obviously, we need to address these, but my assumption is that Mike and whoever else is involved with this is taking into consideration that some of these buildings will need to be replaced within a certain period of time, and the, whatever work they're doing is taken into consideration. What, what are we doing to make sure we're not crossing that threshold that the state has, that if you put X amount of dollars in repairs in a building, that you have to make it compliant with all the other requirements that they have?
Yeah. I don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
But I assume, maybe I do. So the, the proposal is broken out, I think it's five or six schools, and at each school, I don't think that dollar amount would, would cause that, would kick in that need for ADA compliance and the other things that need to happen.
Okay. And just based off of the data you provided, you know, obviously, I know we were all knew facility improvements was important. One of the things, and I just want to know, did you work with anyone, or did you gather the questions that you asked from maybe a group that you're a part of, with other superintendents, or was this done internally? Because there are some things in here that I would assume fall into another one. So like, summer, summer learning opportunities was the least, most priority, but academic intervention was huge, is in the top three. And then, in your plan, your plan is for summer learning programs. So, you know, obviously, you included it, and it was the least popular one, but I believe that it does fall in the academic intervention to address learn, learning loss.
Yep. So I, I, over the course of the summer, there were groups of superintendents who were in constant communication around how these surveys would be, you know, most appropriately compiled. We looked at other districts outside of the state of Massachusetts. Most of these surveys were short in nature and really pointed at, you know, the eligible expenditures according to the rules of the grant. And so that survey is really a reflection of, you know, how can we make this accessible and get the information that we need based on how we saw other people doing this? The, when I put in for the learning recovery and acceleration category, summer learning, that's just one of many things. That doesn't mean that that will be the primary form of, you know, recovery or acceleration. And I would say that, you know, just because it was the lowest-selected one, doesn't mean, you know, under the, you know, auspices or under the umbrella of acceleration, maybe it's not, you know, like, you know, helping students recover, maybe there's a different kind of thought about a summer program. So I'm not, I don't want to count it out. And, you know, these plans will develop over, over the course of this year, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't count it out. And all of our extended-year programs for special-needs students happen in the summer.
Yep, yep.
It falls under that category as well.
And then the infrastructure improvements, when I saw that, because I took the survey as well, I thought of, you know, crossing guards and other things that make, that are in addition to the, obviously, the school building, you know, the infrastructure's not just, it's the ability to get your child to school and to get them back from school. So I like that you, the narrative kind of matches with that, where it talks about the general safety, it talks about the transportation, which I'd like an update on, on that. And then I did like to see that we do have parents here that are talking about elementary school breakfast and lunch, and how that's important to them. And it actually came in the narrative feedback in your, in your response. So you had 3,669 people respond, and it was important enough for you to put in here that they want to improve the quality and expand the options for students, particularly at the elementary level. So, you know, that kind of goes with the dialogue that we heard earlier today, that that's important to families. So if you can get me the report in us on the.
Sure.
Ventilation, and, you know, obviously, you know, the learning recovery, they want small groups, my assumption is to limit the spread of COVID. We've been saying this for four years, that we wanted to expand and increase the clinical resources for students, obviously, the nurses and social workers. So I'm happy that a lot of this feedback, the narrative from families, pretty much align what we've all tried to build over the past couple of years, and now we have the money to do it. So, so I appreciate that that kind of validates where our thought process was years ago. So thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler.
Member Gaetley, then Member Ford, then Member Nicholson.
Dr. Tuttwiler, I'm going to sit down on page five and go through it.
Sure.
Okay, so.
Of the report or the PowerPoint?
Of the PowerPoint.
Sure.
Learning recovery, I was at Lynn English High School this week, and they're up to 2,100 students, so how are we going to get them to get smaller classes? Are you brainstorming on that one?
Am I what?
Brainstorming, working on that?
Just today, actually. Myself, Deborah Jiro, and the principals of Classical and English, I was at class, excuse me, English myself this morning, meeting with a student. I know that that's a challenge. We continue to register new students, which we welcome with open arms, and it's our responsibility to find a way to safely. to safely and comfortably, uh, accommodate them. So we are thinking and working.
Okay, so you'll let us know about that one?
You got it.
Okay. Um, then at the bottom of that narrative, it says pay and benefits, increased pay, benefits for staff. Um, I get a little confused because, um, the Student Opportunity Act, um, in ESSR, I, I really want to, um, align our salaries with surrounding districts, so our teachers and staff are getting paid what they deserve, um, 'cause they worked really hard over this year, and I would like to address that. I know we're gonna do that in executive session, but I really, 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 I wanna have a clarity here. ESSR grant, it can also be used for staff?
Mm-hmm. Operations?
The operations?
Uh, no, you, you can add additional staff with ESSR.
With the ESSR, okay.
What I would just caution you is that there is a, there's a cliff, right? There's a, there's a ti- it stops that money.
Okay.
Uh, it is not in perpetuity, and so I would be careful about adding a lot of staff, because when the grant goes away, then you're responsible, uh, for-
For the staff, okay. Okay, and then over on, um, page six, under food and nutrition, um, I, I'd like to ask Kevin, like, improve quality and expand options for students, particularly at the elementary school level. In the past, we have actually had parents come in and try food. Could we do that again for the parents and, and the audience that are concerned about the food?
Uh, yes. Um, and if you recall, um, we had it probably 2018, 2019-ish, maybe in that fall. I, I remember, most years were here, and we had, actually, the food here, we had a presentation of the group. Um, actually, the food's even gotten, I think, better since then, because at the elementary level, the previous vendor who provided the actual food, all their meals came in frozen, and they used to be thawed out and heated. The current vendor we're utilizing, uh, the meals are made here in Boston, fresh.
Oh, we have a new vendor?
Well, it's, actually, yes. It used to be Preferred Meals.
Okay.
That was our vendor. Now it's Chartwell's, but Chartwell's has partnered with Reb Foods, who's a company technically out of California, and they opened, uh, basically a massive kitchen in Boston, and they also serve Boston Public Schools as well, and some other schools. They, for example, the meals are made, um, on the day, fresh, whether it's a meal, then it's refrigerated, and it's shipped here, refrigerated, and we refrigerate it, and then we serve it to the children. So if we, if it's a hot meal, we would heat it up that day, but it's not like a frozen meal that you would have to thaw out and put in the oven. But even the sandwiches used to be frozen, and we'd thaw them out. We don't do that anymore. So if, for example, if we make a sandwich, it's made probably the day, at least a day in advance, and it's put on the, uh, refrigeration, and then shipped on the truck here and delivered to all the schools, so they serve it the next day. So that's the current model we're using. So there is no more frozen product at the elementary. So we've, I, I think we've made a huge step in that. I mean, there's always room for improvement. I think it would be nice to explore additional options, you know, so they, 'cause now where it's like one meal, pretty much, at the elementary level, you know, it would be nice to have two options. So a child would have either this or this, because we're dealing with a number of children who have different tastes or different likes, and that's always the difficult, um, item, I think. So I'm not, if some of these funds could be utilized to look at that, and how we maybe expand that, uh, there's always a cost to it, but maybe these funds could help look at that part of the process. So, uh, you know, that, that's where we are currently. So I think it's, you know, we have a huge improvement from what we did previously, and I mean, as the, we had speakers tonight, and I know there was always gonna be a hiccup. I mean, um-
Well, that's why-
You know, that, that's, that's the issue, and we will address those as we see them come up and deal with them.
That's why I contacted you when I got that, um, concern by a parent. So, and the parent is here, and, um, and usually, we will look into it, figure it out, and if there's that many that had turned up on the survey that they wanna look into the elementary lunches, it would be possible for them to come and try that, like we, like we did, um, a few years back, and they had one or two meals, elementary. Is that correct?
No, we could always rearrange that. We did that before. Maybe it's a good time. Now we have a newer vendor to come then. They would gladly, I'm sure if we make a phone call, have them come in, set up that meeting with the group. They could then see how they're served. They can explain the nutritional guidelines like we did before, 'cause we are under very strict nutritional guidelines from the federal government to serve what we can serve, and what our options are, and how that's put together, and listen to them take the feedback.
It seemed to be, work well, 'cause there was feedback from the parents right then. It looked, it worked well, and I think that it would be beneficial in this case. Okay, I'm going on to the next one. Um, special ed comp, programs. Dr. Tewill, I have heard from this woman about life skills, the life skills program.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't quite understand what the complaint is, to be honest with you, but she's very upset, and a bunch of people are very upset about life skills.
Mm-hmm. So just quickly, um, what you're referring to is special education compensatory services, um, which, uh, quite frankly, now we are, um, providing services that students did not receive, uh, because we're in remote learning last year, because we were in remote learning for the last half, almost, of the year prior. Uh, and, uh, that's coming in the form of after-school programming. It happened during the summer. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, Monday, uh, another after-school program begins, a special education compensatory program. Uh, the life skills, uh, question, I, I'm, I'm probably gonna need a little more information on that.
Okay, I can, I can share the email, email with you. Um, and then, last but not least, on the last page, on eight, um, screens and windows, some staff, some staff members have talked to me about just screens and the windows or shades. Can we use this ESSR fund to get some screens and windows and shades, and I can tell you what schools?
Um, eh, yes. Uh, I don't know that you would necessarily, I mean, I would much prefer, um, you know, if you're hearing that, to direct that to, uh, whoever, uh, to have them direct that to their principal, and we can get, uh, screens or shades, or shades put in. I know that those, you know, historically have been, uh, not always forthcoming. Uh, and my understanding historically is that it's budgetary, and, you know, they're spending so much money and time on other needs, you know, given that we're now up to 12 buildings that are over 100 years old, and so, uh, the shades come last. However, uh, having taught in a building, um, that faced a direction that the sun came in and I did not have shades, I know how disruptive that-
Yes.
-can be, uh, and how, um, you know, opposite to learning conducive it makes the space.
So now-
So my strong recommendation would be, if you're hearing that, to, you know, give me a call, and, and I'll work with Steve Smith, who's been incredibly accommodating, uh, to try to get that taken care of. I don't think we necessarily need to wait for this, for that.
Okay, thank you. I, we, yep, that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Member Ford, then Member Nicholson.
Yeah, I just had Lorraine mention, uh, some more that I wanted to say when that was, I just wanted to verify that ESSR money can be used for salaries, correct? It says right here, continuing to employ existing-
Oh, can be used to add, uh, staff?
No, it says continue to employ existing-
Or hiring.
To me, that would mean salary, to continue to employ, correct?
Correct.
So that's why, what I, that's why I wanted to verify that it can be used for salaries. Okay, and the other one was just a quick, uh, we, we did a lot of talk about doing air quality tests in the schools when the COVID was at its peak. Are we still doing those air quality tests on a regular basis?
Um, we have not commissioned one for this year. Uh, we certainly can. Uh, those, I think that costs, uh, approximately $40,000.
Or both, it was a little over 40.
Okay. Uh, I mean, we, we, we certainly can. We have no reason to believe, I mean, with all of the, uh, attention that's being given to the ventilation systems, uh, the, you know, higher-grade filters, um, the increased maintenance, I have no reason to believe that, uh, we've gone backward since last year, but certainly, uh, we, we can certainly do that.
I would just think, rather than assume that everything is working, we might wanna check it.
Just to be clear, it, it's agreed. Um, but I, I, I think it's a little more substantive than an assumption. Um, you know, we did the air quality test last year, uh, and, uh, the air quality piece actually came back really-
I agree.
-positive. Uh, and there's been additional interventions and maintenance and attention to those systems. I, I just can't imagine a scenario where we've gone in the opposite direction, but I am happy to, uh, at the committee's direction, um, you know, we, we can order another one.
Well, maybe at some point in time, maybe in the winter months, uh-
Right.
When everything's boxed up.
I mean, we ordered that last year, but I really don't think that that's in my purview. I feel like that's in inspectional service. I, I, that's, we're educators, uh, over here. Uh, and so- Well, we, yeah, yeah. We're, we're happy to do it. Uh, and I mean, we did it last year. My point is to say that, uh, if this is gonna be an annual, um, you know, assessment, um, this is a facilities, uh, element, then it, really, inspectional services should take the lead on that.
Even if we just did it in the 10 oldest buildings, uh, or something that, you know, places that inherently have been a problem?
I would do it, I would do it in all of them. Uh, you know, if it's gonna be, if you're gonna do it, you might as well do it everywhere. Um, but I, my, my point is, I feel like this is a, a part and parcel of a maintenance effort, uh, which, you know, falls under inspectional services.
I'll just, I see it as a COVID thing, so as long as COVID is out, out there, we should do it. That's-
Fair enough.
Member Nicholson?
Thank you. Uh, thank you for the, the presentation, um, and, uh, the process that, that everyone ran to get this feedback, and, and to everybody that gave feedback, all the, the students and, and families and educators. Um, so, uh, so my first question was, do we, do you have a sense of how our participation rate compared to other districts?
I, I don't. Um, you know, uh, and that, our next, uh, urban superintendent's meeting is the 17th. I can certainly ask that question, uh, of, of other leaders, but I have no sense, uh-
Yeah.
-whatsoever. I will tell you, uh, while I have, uh, a sense in one community, but I, I, I think it should remain, uh, nameless, uh, and it was not quite to the level of ours.
Okay, yeah, no, I think it'd be helpful to ask. I mean, I, I think, um, Member Satterway had a good suggestion about, thinking about how we incorporate this going forward, and, and that might be a good way for us to, to sort of set the baseline as to, um, whether we're reaching people, you know? Um, 'cause I, surveys are tough, like, you know, that's a, that's a low percentage of, of member families, but, but it could be a very strong participation rate. It's just hard to know without, uh, benchmarking it. Um, and then-
Just to add to that, uh, really, the goal is around 40%.
Okay.
Right, that, that's, that's what I would call robust feedback.
Okay.
Or at least in sort of, um, evaluation and measurement circles, that would be considered pretty robust.
Great, so that's how, that's a good, so we have work to do.
Yep.
Yep. Um, and then, the, so you mentioned the staff, I, I had, I, when I saw that, we had in the, uh, plan, the staffing additions, um, had that question about the, what's gonna happen. Um, how were, how is, how are you approaching, or how is the team approaching managing that dynamic where if we're, like, do we have a cap on the number of people, or, or are we putting, uh, expecting other funding, planning which funding sources are gonna take over those positions?
Yeah, so, y- you know, uh, I think it was Member Castellanos asked in the beginning, um, you, and, and I might be mischaracterizing this, but it felt like, um, like, when are you, like, you know, when is this stuff gonna start happening, you know, kinda thing? And if I'm mischaracterizing, I apologize. Uh, but, but I really think this is, uh, you know, you've heard us mention go slow to go fast. Uh, I really feel like this is one of those situations where, uh, you know, we really, you know, that, we, we've learned a lot about where students are over the past three weeks, uh, and probably, you know, let's say that i- in August, uh, we engaged this process and made a decision about how these funds, uh, were gonna be spent. I think what we've learned over the past three weeks, we probably might be thinking differently, you know? And so I would rather take really measured, thoughtful, uh, and careful steps around really understanding what students' needs are, so that these funds are really targeted, uh, at their need. Uh, and, uh, it also allows us time to get a sense for the broader picture, for the state funding scenario to sort of, you know, take shape, you know, after the holidays, and then we can think about strategically, okay, so, you know, that, uh, those funds can be used in this way, uh, which are long-term, right? They don't go away, but not supposed to anyway. Uh, and these funds can be used in that way. Uh, and so, uh, you know, when we think about staffing, I, I, I think that's one of the things that I would really like to go, um, and maybe slow isn't the right word, but, but really be thoughtful and careful and not rushed, um, so that we're, we're making, uh, decisions that, uh, can be sustained. Uh, and not everything needs to be sustained. Some things are like high-impact, short, you know, um, you know, types of interventions or activities. Uh, but when it comes to staffing, uh, that's the part where I wanna be really thoughtful, uh, and, and careful. I don't know, I couldn't tell you definitively, you know, the cap is this number of staff. Uh, you know, it's, it's way too early. Uh, but I think as, um, you know, the year two of the Student Opportunity Act, uh, come, becomes clear to us, uh, we can really start to make some decisions around what, what would be smart, and what would work, and what could or should be sustained, and, you know, what we wanna think differently about, uh, in, in, in other realms.
Great, thank you. Member Capola?
On the special education compensatory programs, how many students is that, um, were affected by not getting their services?
Uh, all of them.
Every, every ed plan, you think? Every ed plan that was out?
Promote learning, they didn't get, they aren't getting all their services. You couldn't do it.
And have-
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry.
And have we filled all of the jobs, you know, the speech, the OT, the PT, all of those jobs?
No. Uh, that is, and remains, you know, one of the, the tougher and most frustrating parts of this is, you know, in the first year of the Student Opportunity Act, you know, as Carrie mentioned earlier, we added all these positions, and everybody was really excited, it's like, all right, now we're finally gonna have an opportunity where we can bring the caseloads down, uh, and, and really, um, provide, you know, personalized attention and meet the needs on students' grid and their IEP. Uh, but then summer happened, and there was a lot of movement, not just in Lynn, across the state, and then there's a lot of departures also, not just in Lynn nationally, uh, from the profession. Uh, and so I think the kinds of struggles that, um, I don't know, almost every industry is experiencing right now around human resources, um, you know, that struggle is also felt here. Uh, and so, uh, the, the, the special education team right now is focused, you know, intently on getting all of their programs stood up, uh, but also, uh, trying really hard to recruit for those positions, so.
Maybe we should be thinking the way we were thinking about teachers, you know, trying to encourage from within to go on to those kinda programs, because, you know, it's a struggle all the time for those particular jobs, so, you know, maybe we should be working that same way.
Yeah. Uh, I would say this struggle is, uh, is unique. I, I don't think we've ever experienced anything.
This is the worst it's ever been.
Yeah, yeah, but it's always been a str- uh, there's always been some struggle to that, always. Um, the other thing is, um, it's seemed like you, when you mentioned ISD and, um, and Mr. Donahue, Mr. Donovan, um, that he, it sounds like this, the healthy schools part, that 20%, sounds like something that's already mapped out.
If you want it to be. Um, that's an id- those are ideas around, so what that, what those documents are are needs assessments. Like, here's what these, you know, collections of schools need, uh, in order to refine, repair, enhance, sustain those systems. This is really, I present this to you as a proposal. You're, you can change it.
Well, I understand that, but without us seeing that, so maybe if you could get us a copy of that, you know, we will see what's still on the, um, sheet of needs in all of them. You know, we used to get that kind of on a, a little regular basis, so- You know, we used to get that kind of on a, a little regular basis, so maybe if we could have that. Thank you.
Just, just a point, I know we're continuing to have the discussion on the, um, on the, um, the healthy schools piece or the, the eight and a half million dollars. Those, I think there is a needs assessment, and then those dollars can be used for specific purposes related to ventilation and other needs in the schools that are identified in an assessment. So to take, to be able to take these dollars from the federal government that we would not have to otherwise take from our own resources, is kind of the discussion here that's going on. So if those assessments that have been made are, are definitely needs, separate from the 10 schools that we had previously allocated dollars for, these dollars can be spent specifically for those purposes. You can't do it for building schools or for other infrastructure investments. So if, if that assessment needs, and I think allowing us to take a look at that, Dr. Tuttwiler, it would be helpful. But those assessment, assessment needs reflect the, the, the alignment with the, the way the federal dollars can be spent. So it makes sense for us to then take those assessments and utilize the dollars from the federal government than otherwise we'd have to spend locally and, and may not be able to spend in a, in a shorter period of time like these dollars are available. So I think the assessment.
I have no idea, and, you know, I'm not, uh, questioning, cause I think it's definitely, we're getting the money and obviously to do the repairs is the right thing, but just to see the list of.
Absolutely.
You know, where does it bring us? Does it bring us, you know, ahead to anything that, um, then we feel like we're?
Member Sadoway, then Member Castellanos.
Uh, Dr. Tuttwiler, I know that you said that this was a draft, and if, if we wanted any changes, uh, to, to let you know. And, um, there's just a couple. And it's not really a, a change, it's more of an explanation. I don't want, uh, cause this is gonna be posted, I don't want parents to read this and think that we just ignored certain parts of it. Um, if you go on page seven, facilities, um, the notes were obviously to improve the facilities, but also to build new schools. If we could put, um, maybe a star next to that, and at the bottom, just put, um, this, these funds are not, uh, able to be used to build new schools, or something like that, just so it's, it's, they don't feel like we're ignoring that particular thing. And then with general, uh, safety, uh, my daughter goes to Pickering, so obviously when, um, uh, there was threats there, uh, this past week, that was the, you know, at the forefront of my, my mind is obviously school safety. So the school resource officers are, are from the police, correct?
They are, but they're charged to the district.
Okay, uh, but we, they, we, in order to get one, the police have to agree. So I would say that, uh, in order to, like, have just a, an explanation that this needs to be in partnership with the, the police, just like with crossing guards, because they fall within the purview of, of, of the Lynn police. Just so again, um, uh, the people that are reading these responses don't feel as though they're overlooked. It's just there are additional things that need to take place. It's more transparency, more of an explanation, uh, for those. But the rest of the thing seems, uh, seems spot-on, and I'm fine with the, the rest of the report, if we can just have that addition to it.
Member Castellanos?
Yeah, I, I want to thank Attorney Sadoway for actually pointing out that piece. For, for general safety, I did, um, you know, I know we had a discussion around cybersecurity, internet safety. I think, you know, there, there's definitely well-needed, uh, you know, resources and development there. Um, it's been a need. I do get a lot of calls from families and parents about internet safety and what we do to, you know, combat certain concerns around that. The, the, the piece that I really want to also bring up is, um, when we look at certain, um, capital improvement gains, and I know we're not gonna be looking, I, I'm glad that Attorney Sadoway actually brought that up too, cause I know we're not gonna, we can't use those funds to build schools, I get it, right? We, we get that. But if there's, you know, when we, when we were in Lynn Tech, you know, when we had our vaccination, um, operation going on, the floors, I know the basketball floors were, you know, there, there was a lot of people in and out, the wear and tear. I think identifying throughout the district really where the wear and tear locations are. I know weight rooms, like athletic facilities, I know we talked about it during our budget, um, here and about a few months ago. You know, figuring out what type of capital improvement gain. Before we make a, a decision on those capital improvement, um, projects, we'll love to see the presentation, we'd love to see what that looks like. Um, I know, and I, I like, I like your approach, you know, going slow and really, you know, make a show that we make a strategic, um, move that's, you know, it's gonna benefit us at the best way possible. So I do, um, do, do want to emphasize, you know, capital improvement gains that, you know, that we do look at. We like to see how those look, to be part of the, and also, and if we have to put it to buildings and grounds, also, cause we have subcommittee, I know, as we meet as a whole, um, I don't mind meeting separately to really, like, just be part of that process, because we do hear from the public, we hear from folks. So it's, it'll be, it'll be, it'd be actually really good to, to continue to partner up as, as a school committee member to be part of that conversation, so we could share with you, uh, community input to, you know, even if you have input, we share an ambassadorship. So we, we communicate with our constituents, um, every day. So it'd be healthy to do that as we move forward.
Can I just point out one thing? So, uh, one, I think there's already an effort, uh, ongoing with that floor.
Correct, and we've already been in touch with ISD.
Uh, two, those kinds of things would not be eligible. These funds can only be used, and from a facility standpoint, on things that are, uh, related to safety, uh, in, in this context of a pandemic. So ventilation, I, you know, I gave the example of the, you know, going from, you know, your traditional water bubbler to the bottle fillers, like, things of that nature, that's what would be allowed. I, I, yeah, I, there were a number of comments in the narrative feedback that, you know, reflect exactly what you're talking about, and I, I feel that, and I hear it often. These funds unfortunately cannot be used for that.
Okay, so sanitation, anything around, like you said, those, so that the, in, in the application itself, you guys have already, obviously, addressed those, uh, like you said.
We haven't done the application yet.
You, you've reviewed the.
We, yeah, we know what's eligible, what's ineligible. And as long as you can make a tie or draw a connection in line to, um, you know, the facility's concern as being safety, COVID safety-related, then it would, it would be eligible.
And you guys partnered up with, uh, Mr. Donovan, obviously, that, so he's your, he's your major player here. As we're developing expenditures, and we're gonna, obviously, he's gonna, he's, he's an engineer, and they're gonna find out whatever way possible to, to do this. So, so, so that's actually, I, I really appreciate that. And if we could make sure that we're tied into that communication, uh, it'd be good just to have that oversight. So I could see that, cause that, that's really helpful, you know, as we.
You will have it.
Cause people ask questions, like, like, again, I, I can go back and explain to them, well, this is what, this is what we're eligible for, this is. So, so it's, it's really transparency. You know, we want to make sure that folks understand there's certain standards and, and state guidelines and federal guidelines that we have to follow. So it's good to know, um, instead of having, uh, actually, you know, when we come to a meeting, we, we hear it, but it's good to be preventative to figure that out, so, thank you.
Member Sadoway?
Thank you, I, I make a motion to, um, approve the Lynn Public Schools Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief, SFR III allocation plan with, um, you're fine with the additions that I wanted in there? Okay, uh, with the, um, additions to page seven, where, um, there are additional clarifications, with build new schools, um, in the school resource officer and crossing guard as discussed with Dr. Tuttwiler.
Second.
Second, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss attorney representation related to contract.
Can I make, can I make, uh, one suggestion?
Sure.
Before we go into, uh, executive session? That we, um, allow the superintendent to just go through the communications and information, and then, uh, we can go into executive session.
I make a motion to move, um, uh, the article under nine of the agenda, Communication and Information Superintendent's Report, uh, tip before E on eight, new business.
For a second?
Second.
We'll take a roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Dr. Tuttwiler?
Yeah, um, so there's a report in your folder, uh, I'll just share it with those who are watching. Three years ago, when we launched the effort to develop the district strategic plan, we did so under a theme. I mentioned it earlier, go slow to go fast. This meant taking time to carefully evaluate where we stood and where we wanted to go. It meant taking time to listen to stakeholder experience, thoughts, and wishes. What resulted from this process that took place over the course of the 17, 18 school year is a document in which we all believe and that drives our work over the course, uh, of five years. The current context calls for the same careful analysis, planning, and collection of input to ensure long-term success. This week marks the third full week of the school year. There are areas of success and areas of concern. Uh, we have launched nearly all of our beginning-of-the-year programs, both during the day and after school. From a student experience standpoint, the ability to attend school in person full-time each day is critically important. Additionally, there are many resources and activities available for students to engage academically and recreationally. What began, uh, as a difficult transportation scenario with so, few solutions available has almost righted itself with more than 90% of riders arriving on time to school each day. While there's areas of success that can be, can and should be celebrated, they should not and will not overshadow the concerns. As we believed would be the case, there are positive COVID-19 cases happening in the district, mostly among students and even some staff. Although the transmission on-site is not to blame for the vast majority of them, any positive case is worthy of our attention and response. Much of the response has come in the form of activating our contact tracing system and quarantining students according to the DESI guidance based on, and based on nurse analysis. As of Tuesday of this week, uh, nearly 180 students, uh, have been quarantined, quarantined. The vast majority of these students are at the elementary level. While the quarantine number represents 1% of the total enrollment, a quarantine scenario represents significant hardship on these students and their families. Thankfully, uh, the test-and-stay protocol is set to launch next week. This will allow students who are identified as a close contact and who have no symptoms and test negative, uh, using the rapid test available in schools to remain attending school so long as they continue to test negative each day over a period of seven days. I want to be clear that it will take us two to three weeks to roll that out to every school, but it begins, uh, on Monday. Much of the planning for this began immediately upon notification by the state in August. Uh, and now the state vendor, uh, supporting the testing effort has brought on the appropriate personnel, uh, in this effort, for this effort to begin. The weekly testing model will begin shortly thereafter. Here, it should be, also be mentioned that it's believed that a vaccine for children under the age of 12 will be available by the end of October. Go slow to go fast. Slow would be an inappropriate and inaccurate descriptor for the actions related to the work to ensure safe and successful start to the school year. Nonetheless, some of the pieces of the plan take time to implement. We're carefully and thoughtfully implementing these pieces. At the same time, we continue to embrace feedback and act upon our philosophical foundation, which includes clear and frequent communication. All of this together will provide stability and allow, continue, allow us to continue all facets tied to our theme, stabilize, heal, and transform.
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler, here's, uh, Member Capola, then Member Gaetley.
Just in regards to our packet, um, we normally get the packet that shows the hirings, the, um, you know, resignations, retirements, and that wasn't in here. And I can't remember if we had it in the last packet.
Normally, we get something in September, you're right, Donna. Uh, there's something that's due in September.
I gotta figure out what it is.
I'll see to it that it's there next time.
Okay, thank you, yep.
Member Gaetley, did you have a question?
No.
Okay.
She wanted me to make the motion to go into executive session.
Okay. Member Sadoway?
I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss attorney representation related to contract negotiation. This discussion of these matters, which involves strategy in an open meeting, may have detrimental effect on and compromise the bargaining positions of public body.
Second.
Second, we're going to roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Entertaining motion to come in back into regular session. Motion to.
Second.
Roll, roll call?
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Uh, just given, uh, the update on the executive session, um, uh, where no votes were taken, uh, we will seek to, um, hire an attorney for negotiations and continue.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Uh, roll call?
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Have a good night, everyone.
Bye.